Madam President, we are live.
Bridgette, I can hear you, but it doesn't appear that Commissioner Sumner Dumas can.
Okay, let's just stand by and we'll fix our audio issue. Oh, one second.
Madam President, just having an issue hearing you.
Okay, now it's coming up now. Okay, I apologize, I did not hear you guys. Good afternoon. I called to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting of June the 3rd. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We also have with us our Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator, so welcome.
Thank you.
We'll get started, as we always do, with silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Once again, we've had some mass shootings, so I just ask that we continue to keep everyone in their prayers. So, a word of silence, please. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Ms. Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a presentation, a proclamation and recognition of National Foster Care Month in Hamilton County. I believe our JFS persons are going to talk about that. I see Laura is on. And Tim.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that I am sitting in for Laura. I am a contract services supervisor.
Okay, great. Tim?
Sorry.
That's okay. Tim, did you want to speak to National Foster Care Month?
Yeah, I apologize, Madam President. My system was acting up. No, obviously, being a foster parent is a special thing. Something you'll never hear any JFS director or anybody in this business say is that we have too many foster parents. We have too many kids that need, you know, somebody to help them through the worst time of their life, but it's a special person that takes up that mantle and welcomes people into their homes, sometimes for a few days, sometimes for, you know, literally the rest of their childhood. So, we can't thank people enough who step up to do that, because frankly, it's a very special person that does that, and they have a lifelong impact on the people that they help. And we have some foster parents who have fostered just an unbelievable number of children and done it for years and years and years and years, and keep signing up to do it. So, we are endlessly thankful for the work that they do. They make a tremendous difference, not just in this county, but throughout the country, to give kids who would otherwise not have a home, a loving home, a loving home. And that's, as you can imagine, that is a special, special thing, and certainly worthy of a monthly proclamation, but even more so than that. But my deepest, deepest, deepest thanks to the foster parents that are out there that serve not just Hamilton County, but anywhere, because often a foster parent serves many counties, you know, that are contiguous through the organization that they might be working with. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do.
And thank you, Tim. As you say, what would we do without foster parents? I put them on the same level, almost as grandparents, even though grandparents are related to those children, but what they do for society and making an impact on these young people is, we can't even count the ways that they do that. Commissioner Reese, would you like to say a couple of words as it relates to that?
I just want to join with you and the board and with what Tim has indicated, certainly to all of our foster parents that are out there. It is critical, it is important. So happy to join in the proclamation today.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Yeah, this was brought to my attention last month. May was Foster Care Recognition Month, and so, thank you, Tim, for speaking to the importance of foster parents in that community. We're always looking for good folks to do that. I personally know, so my former chief of staff fostered, I don't know how many kids he's fostered, but he has seven of his own, so it's really quite the full house when he fosters. But it's a real calling, I think, for some people to give back in that way to the community and try to keep kids safe. So, we wanted to recognize that. So, thank you again for speaking to it, and we'll get the proclamation over to you. Thank you.
Alex was something special.
That's right. Nine kids in his house sometimes. I'm like, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll make sure we do it in May of next year, but it certainly is still just as important. We'll move on to public comments. Bridgette, do we have any public comments?
For the public on the other side, if you could just raise your hand, and then I'll unmute you on my end. And it looks like we do have one public comment from Carrie Davis. Carrie, you are unmuted on my end. So, Carrie, you might, there you go.
I'm sorry, I'm not good with my technology. I'm calling to crab at you because I do not feel the Board of Commissioners are dealing with the landfill issue on the expedited timeline that is necessary to be effective. They already have one permit pending, which the Ohio EPA has denied the request for a public hearing on because it's not required for that permit. And so, if the Board does not quickly learn their authority and their power, you are essentially approving the next permit. So, the Solid Waste Landfill Committee has no authority on the designation, the citing, or making of rules. That is only a power of the Board of Commissioners. And since we have neglected to create that policy over the last decade, we're behind the eight ball, and it's kind of being proposed that we go through the Solid Waste Committee, when that process can take a year and a half, and we don't have a year and a half. By then, the other permit will be on the table, and you will have essentially by acquiesce, have given your authority to let the landfill go forward if you don't act within weeks, because the permit is pending. I understand you want to get legal counsel's interpretation. I respect that. I want that, too. I want a real attorney weighing in on this to, you know, direct me in the correct area. But waiting months, even weeks, is not fast enough if you want to address this problem for all these residents. So, I'm asking you to get your interpretation from the prosecutor's office within the next week, so you know what your powers are, and you can make your decision then what powers you, how you want to use your power. But I'm asking you to expedite this, and please stop kicking it down the road to another day, another week, another month, another year, because our residents don't have that luxury.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to make a comment. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for calling in and giving your opinion on that issue. I do know you'll be talking with the Solid Waste Management District, but the county, for those who are listening, we're awaiting information from the staff and also our legal counsel on these issues. So, we want to make sure that we have everything accurate and everything in a row the way it should be, and everything has been researched before we act on this. So, thank you very much. I will move forward with comments and motions. Vice President Reese?
Thank you. One, I wanted to acknowledge the passing of Jean Bouffray, and certainly a big loss for our county and for the city. And for those who may not know, Jean Bouffray was at the University of, was at Xavier University, political science, political strategist, very involved in the community, and did so much and trained so many students out of the political science department. He was the go-to person for a lot of the interviews where people say, "What's going to happen next politically, whether it's locally, statewide, or national?" And a lot of his predictions actually came to light. And so, I just wanted to certainly send out thoughts and prayers to his family and to the Xavier University family, and to his wife Lynn Marmer, who was one of the VPs at Kroger's. I think she retired a couple of years ago. And so, just want to give thoughts and prayers to their family in remembering Jean Bouffray. So, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to also talk about, I got a chance to go to Art Works Open House and Gallery in Walnut Hills, really, really nice facility, and it was great with the Walnut Hills Community Council and all the folks at Walnut Hills. It was a great, great event, and certainly wanted to acknowledge that. It's going to be really big in that community that is revitalizing, and, you know, we'll see a lot of great artists come through there, come out of there. So, I wanted to recognize that. Also, I wanted to, one of the things I wanted to give a compliment to the administration is, I've been talking about a couple, almost a lot of weeks here, broadband, Wi-Fi, that is something that we all got to see, unfortunately, during COVID, how important it is, although many of us knew it was important before then, and have been working on this digital divide for many, many years. And I know as we go into our new American Rescue dollars, there's money in there for broadband, and there was talk at the state possibly. But one of the things that, it was brought to my attention by Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter out of Lincoln Heights, she had given me a call and said, "Hey," you know, she had tears. She broke into tears because she said, you know, anybody who knows her, she's always like my baby. She's called all of the youth in that area her babies. She said, "I don't want to fall behind. What can we do? We're a small village to get Wi-Fi." So, contacted Jeff, and I want to thank Holly and Joy. We had Zoom meetings with them, and what came out of there was bigger than just Lincoln Heights, $600,000 grant that was able to be put together with some funding that was left over. And out of that, not only Lincoln Heights now will have, for the first time, public Wi-Fi investment. Deer Park will have it. Chiviet will have it for the first time. Lachlan will have it, and Malheathy for the first time. So, I just wanted to just thank the administration for that, and also thank Councilwoman Linda Childs-Jeter for reaching out, because out of that, these meetings led to us being able to have a grant program and having other municipalities to be able to start. This is just the beginning, I think, certainly with the money. Hopefully, when we do our final thing of American Rescue, looking at how to make Hamilton County a smart city is something that I look forward to working on. So, just wanted to, just wanted to say that. I think that was just some really good news and just really excited about it. And like, Madam President, you say, when people can call us, sometimes ideas come from the people, and we're able to connect the people and put the right administration together and get something that helps not only one community, but a lot of other villages and townships, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to pile on with Jean Bouffray. So, I just want to also extend my sympathies and acknowledge what a force Jean was in this community over at Xavier University and beyond. So, I, too, want to offer my condolences and my thoughts and prayers for Lynn and the family. So, we also celebrated Memorial Day on Monday, and so I had the opportunity to go out to Silverton for their event, and it was also, they have an art installation out there that was dedicated. And I got to tell you, it's, they've got a lot going on in Silverton. All the council members that were there, Mayor John Smith was there, and the administrator, and it was, it's just fantastic. So, it's a great installation. You have to look at it from across the street to get the full effect, but it was, it was really a neat ceremony. And then Blue Ash had their annual event for Memorial Day as well, and I was happy to join some of our local judges and administrators over at that event as well. Also, last Friday, we had the one-stop-shop start up again. It's been on a hiatus since COVID, because we were very worried about people congregating and being close to one another. So, the sheriff, in partnership with HCARC, hosted that over at the Justice Center. It was a rainy day, if you'll remember, on Friday, so people got a little bit soggy, but they still showed up, and many people were helped by the many, many agencies that continue to provide support for folks, whether they're re-entering or they suffer from an addiction or mental health issue. Those resources were all in the same place at the same time. And I just want to thank Trina Jackson for being very determined to make that happen, along with Tom Steinen. And then lastly, Sally Crystal retired over at the Board of Elections. We had a proclamation for her, and I was happy to represent the Commission over there and celebrate Sally. She had that job for many, many years. She was a go-to for probably all of us, whether on the political side or on the policy side. But her service did not go unnoticed by any of us, and so, we celebrated her retirement. She did not divulge what she's going to do next, but we all had suggestions for her. So, that's all I have. A lot of celebrating going on the last few days.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I just have a couple of comments. I participated in the photo shoot over at Cincinnati Public Library, and I believe you ladies were going to be a part of that also for the summer book program that they're having there. They're also renovating quite a bit. So, I took some tours through each area, so that was very nice. And I thank them for what they did as it relates to just the courtesy and allowing me to meet the staff and everything there. Attended the CVB meeting this morning. Julie Calvert and with the Executive Committee, they are doing great things, coming up with some great ideas. So, you'll be hearing more about that for sure. Commissioner Drehouse, it was weird for me on Wednesday not to look at the briefing.
I know.
As we said, it was time for the briefing to end. It was opportune time, but it was just a little weird. I just want to bring up, also as it relates to things that we started a while ago, the state of emergency that we have been proclaiming like every two months. Our state of emergency actually is scheduled to end the end of June, unless we decide to move forward for a couple more months. We'll be talking about that more. But it is scheduled at the end of June to end. And I wanted to bring up about Juneteenth celebration, because the Board will not have Board meetings on the 8th and the 10th of next week. But we will still be working, attending meetings, and doing all the things that we do. We just are not having a Board meeting. So, but Juneteenth is actually on the 19th of June. We, the Commission is having a celebration on the 17th. It'll be a great celebration in front of the courthouse with the podium, with Lydia Morgan, who started all this process. This Juneteenth holiday has really gone full cycle. And in 2019, where I introduced our celebration of Juneteenth, and then 2020, we made it official, the Board made it official holiday. And now, this will be the first time that county employees are celebrating it on a holiday on the 18th, on that Friday, and that's why we're having it on the 17th, because we want employees or whoever from different entities to come. So, it's just really a time for celebration. Now, even the labor, the unions have agreed to make it holidays, and other entities like the courts, they have recognized it's important holiday. So, we'll be talking more about it. We will deliver a proclamation at that time, on the 17th, along with Lydia there, and maybe some more celebration with some dancers or speaker, but it'll be short, at 11 o'clock on the 17th. So, I wanted to bring that up. And that's all that I have right now. So, we'll move on to Jeff Aludo, our County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of comments and then some by leaves. Number one, just want to welcome staff back. I know that the Board's aware that as of June 1, we officially started to transition out of our remote mode. So, while we might not have full 100% folks back in the office, there's, as the Board knows from walking the sixth floor, there's a lot more people around here and in all of our other departments as well, just a lot more people back from remote working. And it's great to have people back to see folks, as well as just to reflect that it is a sign that we are coming out of the pandemic as well. So, that's great news. As well as we bring staff back, there's been a couple of changes. The one I just wanted to highlight, as the Board is aware, and I just want to, again, congratulate our former purchasing director, Joanne Kramer, on her retirement, and congratulate Jill Williams, who is now our interim purchasing director. So, I want to congratulate Jill, and I know you'll be seeing her on procurement items as we move forward over the coming weeks, Commissioners. Just a couple of other quick things. Really, one other, and that is just to say, tagging on to the presentation from earlier on Foster Care Month, it'll be good to head out to Washington Park tonight for the Celebration of Dreams, honoring those foster care folks and kids in foster care who are graduating from high school. It's always a great event. You know, it'd be interesting to have it outside in Washington Park, but it's a great event and look forward to being out there this evening. With that, Commissioners, just a few by leave items for you today in your packet. There's three of them. The first is by leave item number one. This is a resolution that authorizes the Administrator to execute the electronic submittal of a notice of intent for our Phase 2 stormwater permit. This is really an administrative, ministerial action, but the county has to be the first one in the EPA system, so that that trickles down to all the other communities who are part of our, of our stormwater consortium as well. But this would give me the authority, since it is an electronic submittal, this would give me the authority to submit that on behalf of the Board in concert with the county engineer. And I know Eric Beck, County Engineer Eric Beck, and Todd Long, I believe, are on, if there are any questions on this item.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Thank you. At that point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Thank you.
Ms. Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number two in your package, one I know the Board has been waiting on. This is the, a resolution allowing for the execution of an agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the University of Cincinnati Medical Center. This relates to the operation of a mobile tech bus with UCMC. UCMC will operate this bus up to eight hours a day, five days a week. Scheduling is going to be determined by the county. UCMC is going to be providing all the supplies, staffing. They'll be coordinating the vaccine from, in accordance with the agreement. They'll provide the nurses, drivers, pharmacists as necessary. The county, of course, will be coordinating the schedule of the bus. We'll be scheduling in as well the coordination and integration of other benefit services being provided through this program, such as JFS, et cetera. This is a three-month agreement that can be extended if necessary. The Administration recommends approval. I also just want to thank Ayesha Howard, who is on the line with us, who has been pursuing this mercilessly since she has come over from JFS. And I know, like all good things, takes a little bit of time, but I really appreciate all of Ayesha's work in pushing this over the goal line for us. I do understand that UC has agreed to and executed the agreement as well. So, once the Board executes, we will have UC take the, begin to put the advertisement publicity around the bus, advertising it as the mobile tech bus, and we will start getting it out into the community. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the Board for any questions. And Ayesha, I believe, is on, if there are any detailed questions that I would not be able to answer.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll open it up for Vice President Reese. Any questions or comments?
Oh, Madam President, no questions. Looking forward to getting going with this, so I'm excited. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, ditto. I hope at some point we'll get kind of a general sense of where it's going, what's being offered. I look forward to seeing that in the community.
Thank you. And Jeff, I saw the 161,000. That's every three months, right?
It's 161,000 every, right, for the three-month agreement build, I believe, in equal intervals on a monthly, on a monthly basis. The Board can extend if it so desires to.
Okay. Thank you, and great job, Ayesha, also. And I'm sure other people were helping, too, so I wanted to mention that. Okay, with no further questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Ms. Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. And by leave item number three is really accepting for the record is the email communication from Tevis Foreman, providing written testimony in support of the verbal testimony for our, at our ARP public hearings on March, on May 25th and 27th regarding the Produce Perks Midwest.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
No question.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Make a motion to approve by leave three?
Second.
Ms. Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we can move to our regular agenda items, Commission and Administration, one, two, and three.
Thank you, Madam President. So, item number one on our regular agenda is Resolution P062-21. This is to accommodate, this is down at Paul Brown Stadium, and essentially to accommodate the game day command center at Paul Brown Stadium with the increase necessary in security in professional sports stadiums. We require all of the security personnel to be co-located to enable efficient communication and operations. So, this is the build-out of that room to accommodate those staff, which will also reduce the size of the press box and overall make just the operation of the security, the security operation of the stadium more efficient on game day.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number P062-21.
Thank you.
Ms. Sumner Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, item two.
Thank you, Commissioners. So, the, this is year two of two of a carpet replacement project at Paul Brown Stadium as well. This, the carpet in many of these areas is original to the building, so it's roughly 20 years old. We started the replacement last year. This is the second year. The amount is 156,400, is with Shaw Flooring Services doing business as Spectra. And this, as I said, is the second year of a two-year program of carpet replacement, and it does factor into our capital allocation down at Paul Brown Stadium. The Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on item two? Hearing none, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number P063-21.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number three is a budget, budget adjustment 18. This is for several items, the biggest item of which is the appropriation. It's a, it's a large budget adjustment, $81.9 million. But understandable when you consider that 79 million of that is just the appropriation of the first round or the first tranche of American Rescue Plan funding that the county received from the Department of Treasury a few weeks back. So this is not paying, we've had some questions on this from the media. This is not paying any particular vendor or anything at this point. This is just setting the stage for the future program as approved by the board. This appropriates the dollars so that we can then begin putting it into the various bins as ultimately approved by the board, get purchase orders done so that we can start programming. But that's all this is, is a ministerial item to appropriate that money to prepare it for future use. There is also some additional items in there. There is an appropriation for the economic disparity study as well. Again, this is not spending that money yet again. It's just appropriating it, allowing for the project to occur. There is also a, a budget adjustment of roughly $25,000 for the National Center for State Courts to come in and provide some assistance to the courts as it relates to the case management system and provide a diagnosis and assessment of what is needed for the upgrade of that system. There's also Cunningham Road resurfacing through the county engineer's office. The administration recommends approval of the adjustment. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. On the economic disparity study, the strat, we've agreed that we need one, so that's not in question or, but the strategy that will be used by the people that we will assign to do that. Are we going to get that sometime soon?
Yeah, so we're, we're finalizing, we're in contract negotiations, finalizing the contract after a procurement process on that, Madam President. And once we have that contract executed, we would have a kickoff meeting with the commissioners to discuss kind of how the flow of events will occur, what needs to happen in terms of, of doing that disparity study in a way that would ultimately provide the county with the ability to make procurement designation. The, the whole purpose of the disparity study is if it, if it does show disparate impact on, on procurement, that the board has the ability to set different targets and goals for MBE, WBE procurement in the future. So we'll, we will update the board in that kickoff on how that process must occur mechanically in order to get us into that position in the future.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I know, I remember the figure of, correct me if I'm wrong, 500,000 for the disparity study. And it's really a little bit of a shame that we have to spend that much when we know there already exists a disparity in procurement in other areas. But you have to have it documented, and most recently, because the studies have been prior to this. So we're going to do it, but it'll come out as we know that it is. And but we'll have the document, documentation to indicate that we need to move forward quickly. Vice President Reese, I'm sorry, Jeff, were you?
No, I was, I was just going to say that's well, well stated in the Ohio procurement law. Depending upon what you're procuring and how you procure, procuring has very explicit standards for lowest and best, et cetera, with the inability to, to set specific targets for MBE, WB, unless you can document that disparity. And that is the purpose for, for doing the study.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. And I do share that sentiment because we collect diverse taxes from diverse people. Especially when you talk about sales tax. We, of course, it's unfortunate that in order for us to have inclusion or representation while having taxation, we have to go through a study to prove that we have an issue. We had a staff meeting and a presentation was made about just in the fourth quarter of the $16 million we had done for upkeep of the stadiums, that's just on the banks. And only having $1,400 go to minority businesses, $0 to women only. So I certainly share in that sentiment. And to be honest, I'm very uncomfortable in the weeks that I've been here, 100-plus days, that we're, we're, we're voting on millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. And every day that goes by that we don't have, I would, I would assume a disparity study, every day that goes past, there's no inclusion. Most of these are no inclusions. There's no improvement, no inclusion because of that. So my question is, Jeff, on the, as I know that this disparity was voted on, I think, I don't know, in July of last year, maybe. What is the, we vote on this, what will be the timeline to get something completed? So that, you know, as each week we're asked to vote on millions and millions of dollars, you know, we're not continuously leaving people behind. And I know that's not your intention or the board's intention. But, you know, we've, we've got to, you know, hopefully get moving so that we don't keep having taxation without participation.
No, thank, Madam President, Madam Vice President. I, I understand we certainly want to execute this as quickly as, as we can. The, the process, and I'll, I will follow up with the board with the exact project schedule. I think I had included that in a, in a past weekly report, but it's been a while, I think, since I did. But the actual process, it, it takes some time. I think it, it takes months, maybe even up to 12 months to complete the, the study and get it done in a way that, you know, allows for the, the benchmarking of, of procurement, the way we need it to be benchmarked. But the, the goal is to start it as quickly as possible so we can wrap it up as quickly as possible. But I'll provide you the exact schedule that is being, has been constructed by Robert Bell in our Office of Equity and Inclusion and the consultant that is working with him on the project.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to know, once we vote on this, is there another vote required before we get, you know? Like, is it, we vote on this and then it's, you know, tomorrow you sign a contract?
This is good, that's a good question.
Good.
Go ahead, Madam.
This is just initial acceptance of an economic disparity study, but no one specific, no company specific. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, no, that's, that's right. This is the appropriation of the dollars. So this was an earmark in our 2021 general fund budget. So it was essentially held, the dollars for it were held in reserve. So this is the appropriation of those dollars so that we can contract. That contracting procurement process has taken place. And would imagine that the department, the Office of Economic Equity and Inclusion is prepared to bring that forward to the board. But because of the dollar amount of it, it will require a separate vote. So that'll be coming forward fairly quickly here.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to know the process. I had gotten that by two groups in double ACP, or believe they were asking me what happened next. So I just, a lot of times we vote on stuff and we think, oh, and we're getting ready to do it. And then three months later, we're voting on it again. So I just wanted to know what those steps were. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Reese? Oh, God, Commissioner Drehouse?
That's all right, that's all right. No, you're fine. So, yeah, I was going to highlight this item actually because of the dollar amount coming and going here. So, and, but to, but to the comments, I, I just do want to say that this study, the disparity study, was something that was on the radar. It's been a number of years ago. And so we hired Robert Bell in. I don't, it was either 17 or 18 to start up the work with inclusion here at the county. We knew our numbers weren't where any of us wanted them to be. And so we started there. And, and Robert has built a bold initiative to create relationships and create lists where we have a better understanding of what, who's available in the community to provide services or participate in contracts or whatever it is, in, internally and externally. And we're hoping that we would move the needle with some of that work. And I think we have. It's, it's been, as a matter of degree, it's been smaller than any of us would have hoped for. But, but the work has been ongoing through his office, and now we've hired another person into that office, primarily because of the resolution that we did last year declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. And so both that employee and this disparity study were a result of the work that was done last year through that initiative. And then we included it in the budget in both cases for the additional person and the disparity study. I, I share the frustration that we can't move forward until we do this. Because we were trying in the meantime to create these relationships and, as I said, move the needle. We have been less successful than we had hoped. But this is the reality. The city did this many years ago, as we know. And now we are doing it. And I feel as though, once this is completed, we will have the ability to do what we need to do to, to ensure that folks do get an opportunity in Hamilton County and, and know about the opportunities in Hamilton County. I think that's part of the problem. And that's another facet of what I think Robert has been trying to address. So I, I want to kind of echo the comment. I'm glad this is on the agenda. You know, I, I too want to see it moving as quickly as possible. I know there's a process, but, you know, I think we all think this will be a great tool for us to use here as we try to include numbers, numbered for minorities and women to participate.
Thank you. And, and I would reiterate the fact that as we, we move forward with this study in a major way, where we can change systems. But I'm just really happy about what we've done so far when we cite something that's not appropriate or that's not inclusive, that we've been addressing those in a smaller way. But this study will allow us to do things in a major way. So, thank you. So why don't we move forward? Item number three, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a few more items from our engineer, Mr. Eric Beck. Welcome.
Thank you. And I, I'd just like to follow along with Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Drehouse on the loss of Jean Boe Prey. Jean was a close friend of mine, and he will be missed both personally and professionally. He was a great man.
Great.
Item number four is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and Greentownship for Ohio Public Works. This again is another project where we've successfully got grant funding in partnership with Colrain Township, or excuse me, Greentownship. The total project cost is $1,390,000. We have 50% funding from OPWC. Greentownship will be contributing 22%, and the remainder will be coming from county engineers' permissive auto funds. So this allows us to set up the, the agreement with the Ohio Public Works Administration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments as it relates to item four? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four?
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Transportation and the county engineer's office to mow, mow a portion of Ronald Reagan Highway between I-275 and US 27. This portion of road is a, it's a high-speed four-lane, as you may be aware. The county engineer is responsible for the portion west of Colrain Avenue. This allows ODOT to mow that and bill us for that mowing. It takes specialized equipment that they have, and we do not maintain.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on item five? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item five?
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is a, is another agreement with ODOT. This is the first extension and amendment to the snow and ice agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Transportation. This is for snow and ice removal on state routes in the unincorporated areas. You may recall you had one earlier this year. ODOT is changing the agreement, not the terms, just the date. They want to get it on their fiscal year schedule and off of the calendar year schedule. That is the only change in this.
Thank you. Even though I don't want to think about snow and ice, we have to, to be, have some forethought. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item six?
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven. This is a resolution awarding contract to lowest and best bidder Barrett Paving Materials for the Broadwell Mount Carmel Road Improvement Project located in Anderson Township. This is project 502003. The low bid was $1,238,459. That came in under our estimate, engineer's estimate of $1.5 million. So it looks like we're going to be getting some good prices this year.
So can you sort of break down, Eric, where the monies are coming from? I mean, are we shaming?
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. We have an OPWC grant for this project for $267,130. The remaining $971,329 comes out of permissive auto.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
Eric, we, a lot of the permissive auto fees are contributing to the financial stack for these projects. And I was wondering, I was asked the other day at a forum about what we're doing related to infrastructure. And I said, well, let me tell you, you know, because we're doing so much. But I do think it's flying under the radar, even though every week we've got road projects, a lot of it's being pushed along through the, the permissive auto fee. Can you help us as a board get some context around the, the volume of projects that we are doing most recently? And it, because it's not only permissive auto, it's also, we, we've got some more resources through the gas tax. And then the sorta levy has contributed in. So I, I think it might be helpful just for, I, I would like to have that in front of me so that when asked, I mean, I like generally know this, but I don't know the dollars and cents. And I also don't know the trajectory of the projects that are now getting completed because from one source or the other, some voted on by the citizens, others voted on by the board and, and up to the legislature. I just don't have a general sense of how much more is being accomplished. And I think it would behoove us to know that. So if you could put together something, I don't know if a chart would be something you can, or a graph or something to help us get a better sense of that.
Absolutely. We'll be glad to put that together for you.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. No further comments. I, I, I agree with you that we don't tell our story very well, that there are great things that the county is doing. People are finally finding out the authority, the, that we have, the elements that we impact, how much we do. I think we need to do a better job of just saying in every department, the great things that we're doing. And so I'll just leave it at that, because people for a long time didn't even know, what is a Hamilton County Commissioner? But I think we, we are telling our story and telling the story of our staff that are working with us. So no further comments. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number seven.
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We'll move forward with our consent agenda items. I'd like to just do a brief summary. We have before us some items to adopt, item eight through 15. And it includes accepting and authorizing a contract between the Hamilton County Soil, Water, and Ohio Federal Water. EMA wants to purchase a box truck for the board to approve. And then also Commissioner Drehouse has an administrative aid proposal that's coming for a resolution, I should say. And then bids and awards contracted in the month of April through JFS, we need to approve. And also JFS is asking for approval of group home services and residential treatment services. Hamilton County Juvenile Court has placement costs with an agreement with the Ohio Department of Medicaid we need to approve. Those are the ones for adoption. Are there any questions or comments? Vice President Reese?
Um, no questions or comments.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Well, I, I would like to highlight item number 10. Well, I, I would like to highlight item number ten. Gina Marsh is coming in as the chief of staff. She'll be joining myself and Fatima Ba here in the office. Very, very excited about Gina coming to work with us. She's, she's coming on the fourteenth. And so we've Fatima and I have been carrying the laboring oars here in the office without a chief of staff. But anyway, we're, we're very excited and we'll welcome Gina when she gets here. Thank you for this.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt items eight through fifteen.
Second. Commissioner Samardzimus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And we have one item to receive for the record. It was no objection to a liquor permit through the Sheriff Department. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to accept for the record item sixteen.
Second. Commissioner Samardzimus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yeah.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like to make a comment again. I said it earlier that there will not be any board meetings next week on the sixth, on the eighth or the tenth, but we will be working for you. So don't worry about that. We just will not be meeting. Any additional comments from the commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Madam President, I do know. I wanted to also acknowledge the Women's Fund of Greater Cincinnati and the Economic Center of Research and Consulting and Cincinnati Greater, Greater Cincinnati Foundation. They issued a study on African-American women in the Cincinnati region, which is throughout Hamilton County. And the, it's called realizing the potential of an equitable economy. And the numbers and data and, and findings in this is startling. And as we're looking at building, you know, Hamilton County for the future and as we have more, it has in here, more African-American women have college degrees but are living below the poverty guidelines. Everything that could hit you is hitting the African-American woman three times as hard. And so I wanted to, I don't have it today, maybe, I have it, but I want to enter it at some point for the record. Maybe next week, our next meeting, I want to enter it to the record. And I'd like to, if possible, at some point, Madam President, I don't know if it's, how that works or if it's possible, maybe have them come in and do this presentation of what the findings are and where do we go from here. Lucy May from WCPO did a phenomenal story that she had. A, a, a single mom who's educated, who says the economy is not equal. You can't make it here in this region, no matter how much education you have, if you are a African-American woman. And as we look around African-American women as CEOs or being heads of organizations, being there at Fourth Street where they're making decisions, corporate boards, all that, the list goes on and on. The rest of the country sees African-American women and they're in these positions. We see it all the time nationally. But in our region, it's not happening. And so this report targets that, talks about that. And certainly something that I think would be, I don't know how we do it, but if there's some kind of way that they could come and make a presentation or at least have this part of the record so that we could see as we're looking at things in our county, how we can do better and be more inclusive. Maybe there's some recommendations in here that we could also include. So I'm sorry, I meant to talk about that earlier, but didn't want the day to go by without this report getting.
Certainly, we can do both. The next meeting, we can submit it for the record. And also I will talk to my chief of staff about looking at when we can possibly, possibly schedule them to speak. The Women's Fund has, I've had some contact with them recently and they've been very instrumental in funneling women through for different boards. So I want to thank them for what they've done in that area. So thank you for bringing that forward. Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes. And, yeah, and thank you. I just want to pile on that they also helped us launch the Commission on Women and Girls. So the Women's Fund has been, been very, a great partner for this commission. I was gonna ask Jeff if he could give us an update related to our county buildings. And now that we're opened up, as was mentioned earlier. Jeff, my recollection is that we were gonna follow the CDC guide, guidance related to mask wearing. So it might, that, that those of us that are double vaxxed no longer need to wear the mask. But those that aren't double vaxxed do need to wear the mask. Is, is that current policy?
That is, yeah, current policy. And when we, when we opened on June one, when the workforce came back, the, we sent out a message to the workforce saying that we were following CDC guidance at that point. That you, if you were fully vaccinated, you were not required to wear a mask. If you were not vaccinated yet, or if you were in the process of being vaccinated, we're strongly encouraging you to, to wear a mask. We're not actively checking vaccine cards, et cetera, at the door. But at the same time, we are asking people who are not vaccinated or are in the process of being vaccinated to continue to wear a mask until they have received their full regimen of, of a vaccine. So, and as it relates to that, we are continuing to strongly encourage our workforce to get vaccinated. And we have surveyed the workforce once and had, according to the results of that, we're appeared that we did have some good compliance as it relates to vaccine. And that was even before the Vaximillion campaign was, was announced. So we're going to continue to pulse the workforce to determine where we are from a percentage vaccination perspective. But I suspect it is substantively higher than it was several, several weeks ago when we surveyed. So, but that's where we are right now. Commissioner Greenhouse, we are, if you walk into a county building, if you're, if you have, if you're fully vaccinated, especially here at the county administration building, you're not required to wear a mask. There, there may still be some departments or offices or the courthouse, et cetera, where individual office holders or judges in courtrooms may continue to ask for mask compliance, just depending upon what's going on in that particular area. But that's where we are right now.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And the mandate is relates to virtual meetings, meetings ends July the first. There's some talk in the legislature that some people are pushing for December, the thirty-first, extended that, that long. But I just want to say that July first, in the commission, we'll, we'll talk about this later, but I tentatively, I'm looking at July first where we can bring the public into our hearing commission room on July the first. So it will coincide with our inability to be virtual. So if there are any concerns or questions, please let our office know. But that's, that's the plan. Okay, nothing else being, coming forward, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Samardzimus?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a good